Does it seem to be? I call this meeting over. Have a pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Warren?
Yes?
We might have a bid open, please.
Uh, order is.
Okay. We only have one. Oh my, the letter opener doesn't work and Doom is really good on this. Do you hear from my stone contractor? This is for Waterloo Road, Everton Road, Fayette County. Warren, we need to take this and take this seat.
Yeah, I want to look them over after you've read your mouths. I'll come back later and do this.
I had eye surgery yesterday morning, so I'm not reading too well. And I'm allowing my vice president here to check this out for me.
Phase one, Waterloo Road. Total bid, $216,655.80. Phase two, Everton Road. Total bid, for a grand total of the combined phases. Does that sound correct? Represented from Milestone? Yeah. Does that sound, am I reading the right numbers? Okay. So, with that being the only bid, I move that we take it under advisement for Warren to go over it and make sure that it meets all of our bid requirements. All seconded.
Okay. Warren, would you like to take this?
We'll be back later. Do you want to look at them? I have them under advisement.
Yes. Do you want your motion taken under advisement?
All seconded.
All in favor, three ayes.
Aye. I make a motion that we up her minutes of previous meeting.
Did Mark second that?
Yeah.
I didn't hear him. My hearing was bad. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Mr. Warren?
Morning.
Good morning, sir.
Been out there in a lot of ditching, burmaging here lately due to the heavy rains we've been having and stuff. Kind of got that under control so far. Brush cutter should get it back tomorrow. We end up having to get new clutches put in it. We did that in ourselves, but we ain't got no splitter down there in the garage. So, be picking that back up tomorrow. Got two mowers out now. We get that other one back, we'll be having three back out there on the road again. Get the guys out today, put the culvert in. Got one crew putting the culvert in. The other one's out touching up the roads and getting ready to chip some. We're gonna start chipping this week. Better International went down. It pulls the broom. End up having to pull the axle out. Put a new rear sear, real seal in the left hand side. Once we get that done, we're gonna start kicking.
Okay. Is there anything else?
That's about it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Director.
Chair? He's not here yet.
Chair.
He won't be here.
He is.
He did, I handed you guys down two 144s.
Two 144s.
I make a motion that we approve those. All seconded. All seconded.
Then make a motion and second. Are there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I know, I had a whole lot. I talked to you last time about the locks. We're gonna wait on those for a while and see if we can get some of the glass fixed in the cell doors. I don't have any figures with me right now, but they're coming. So, I'm gonna do anything until I get back with you.
Okay.
But we're gonna try to do some with that land X blast in those blocks so they can't break it out. I got a chiller down this morning. Realized where I'm going soon as I leave here. I don't know, I don't know what's going on yet until I get on the road. That's where I'm headed.
Okay.
So, I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got, wait a minute, I got a question for you.
Yeah.
Where would be a good place for us to put our buffalo?
My suggestion would be back here. Someplace on the backside. Really don't want a whole lot of stuff out front.
Okay.
But I think a lot of people will see it back here.
Could you mark a spot? That would make it easier for you to mow around and everything?
Yeah, well, if we go on this corner here, 'cause it's gonna, you're gonna have to get a flat, at least like a pretty flat spot. So, that's about the only spot that's flat back there.
I think I'll do the pad.
We'll have to check with the yard association and see if they're okay.
I imagine you probably will. I just want to make sure.
Could you, a lot of people, I mean, once the train gets going or anything, a lot of people will see it back there.
It's big enough, I can see it from Central Avenue anyway. But we'll check with the yard association, see if they're going to pay for the setting of it and pour in the concrete, whatever, before it's be set out there.
Thank you, sir.
Do we need to have a motion to approve that placement then?
I'll make a motion that we approve the corner, back corner here. All seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
Do you, do you have contact with the yard association?
Yes, I can contact. Tracy Burns is who. Forrest Nash, they'll call Tracy.
Looks like Mike.
Bobby Smith. Michael King.
Morning. Happy birthday. We'll be in a day. Put a flash drive in there for EMA since he has to. He's got something he's gonna put up on the screen. First of all, I got my normal monthly report. Email server for the last month, 30 days. We've got 90,310 emails in and out, or actually just in. 57,000 of those were good emails, the rest were spam. The phone calls, we had 76,281 total calls. And I checked the stat on that. Forty-five, 42,500 of those were actually connected. So, the rest of those were just, you know, missed. But that gives you an idea of how many calls are actually getting through to a person on the, on this end.
That doesn't even count any of them getting on their private cell phones.
Doesn't count calls on private cell phones. Obviously, it doesn't count people that are in and out the door. So, along with dealing with the phone calls, you got people that are coming to the office in front of you too. So, still recovering from bronchitis, so pardon my cough. The, we had 244 calls for the last month for IT. 180 of those were county, so still as normal. Majority of the work being done in state county. Didn't have very many, what I would call, major issues that we completed in the last month. Mostly been a lot of little stuff. Lot of research, a lot of backing up and trying to mitigate all the ransomwares and viruses that are out there. Just trying to do what we can to keep those things out. We did install new battery backups at CPD for the spilling server last week. These act in supplement to the generator and the UPS is down in the basement because we were getting some power fluctuations once we're shutting the server down. So, that will help with that. And of course, the new health department website, we actually completely replaced that. So, in progress research. We're, I'm still working on getting into the old mail archive stuff. Mr. Naylor had asked me to look at some time clock and other software. So, I'm just looking into that. I'm working on a laptop for the, for EMA department. And we're working on, we've got quotes out for the FTL Superior Court. Now, obviously, if that doesn't work, court doesn't work because they've gotta record it. The quotes that I've gotten have ranged in the $8,000 to $9,000 range so far. So, we're trying to see if we can get the software we have, which is made for Windows XP, to work on newer hardware. So far, it's not worked. But if we can get it to work, obviously, that'll be a big savings. But it's, it's a lot of hours of install, play with the settings, try this, try that. That didn't work. Reinstall Windows, try a different way, try different settings, try different hardware configurations. So, we're trying to do that, but we don't know if we'll be able to get around the fact that next, you know, it took a bunch of time, we're gonna have to get money for a new system. Obviously, I'm trying to avoid that, but it is what it is. So, the only thing that I've really got for approval, I had emailed James, so I'm not sure if she gave copies for everybody for the Barracuda quote for our email spam block. The total for 140 users, which we only had 100 users last year, is $1,260 total for the year. I've only got the one quote because it's the one reputable company and we've stayed, we've been using them and the prices that I saw were comparable to other companies. So, I just need to get approval for that. That's it, my budget, so. Pardon me.
A motion to approve the Barracuda quote?
I'll move it. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
I'll get that taken care of. Any other questions for me?
Okay. You don't have Michelle? I see you're here, didn't you have something you wanted to bring in before? You just come to watch. Okay. Warren's not back yet. Emergency management, Mr. Ellis.
Good morning, everyone.
Adrian.
I spent last month and a half of all my security going over a lot of details about what's going on because of a lot of offices not having people appointed in key positions and what effect it's having on us. There's a lot coming downstream that will affect us. And logistics is that the key. Mitigation is something critical that they're hammering down on all of our throats. And basically, what mitigation is, is the act of minimizing or eliminating a threat. Basically, the best example, if you have a home and you have a nine-foot tree 80 feet away, you need to cut off 10 feet of that tree for claws. Plans that are under development for that, I'm rewriting the county mitigation plan. That's a federal requirement. And I'm building a team. Leota, I ask you to serve on that committee. I'm glad Dan is here because you're a team member along with law enforcement and fire department, the mayor, city council, county council members, that we will look at that, all the major players, and probably get the school involved too. This is to look at history, what we've had, what we've dealt with, and what we're looking at. The bottom line is money is up in the air as far as water is concerned. If we have a major issue, we're gonna be standing on our own. We're gonna have to deal with a lot of things. That plan has to be revised and updated every four years, and I'm doing it right now. It's fairly intense. I'm also updating the emergency operations plan. That is something critical that outlines how we operate with things. But we have to do it in a concept of working with outside partners, people coming in, the language we speak and such. The new requirements, the city and county have to develop a line item, line item for disaster funding. If something happens, what they're saying now is, first, you have to basically exhaust your funding before you ask for anything else. And basically, put a spreadsheet together to to give an example, just give me any number. Let's say you had a issue where people had to leave their homes. You had to feed them, give them water. Just give me a number, it really doesn't matter. 50? Okay. And if those people were out for, let's say, your maximum period, if you file a proclamation of emergency, that is good for seven days. And you do the same for water for seven days, then you start to get an idea of what it costs to take care of those people. If you have a line item that looks at that and any other aspect of taking care during a disaster, you're starting to see where your line item budget comes in. What they're saying is, you have to exhaust that before you get any further. That basically goes along the line, and the Red Cross has been restructured. Everything we're doing now, we're starting new ground. So, we've gotta do really good planning. Now, to get back where we were. Our coordination has to be based on a lot of critical issues. That's where the emergency operation plan comes in. Our communication, our community control, our NIMS, the mutual aid agreements that we have with other entities, other emergency response departments, non-government organizations, how we're gonna work with those. All these things have to be updated and agreements made and plans exercised. We have a lot of things coming on. NIMS is a critical issue. And that is a language of emergency response that everybody across the country speaks. That came into being in 2005, but actually went into legality in 2006. Now, a lot of people don't take it seriously, but it's a county ordinance, a state statute, and federal law. In Iowa, two firemen died during wildfires. They were cut off when the wind changed direction and they died. Now, the problem is, the lawsuit was one on two issues. There is no law existing that said they were ever trained how to drive a truck. Simply get in, start putting gear, drop away. The other one was, they were never told what frequency or what channel to be on the radio. Those people died. I think it's easy to say that we've had the same problems here. In 2005, Rob Murray died, Deputy Director of Emergency Management. If that would've been 2006, OSHA would've been all over this community. And I can tell you, one of the most horrible things was looking at my best friend and seeing him go through that. And then having to sit through three-hour interrogations from OSHA to explain what happened that day. This is a structure that mirrors everything going on. We have a lot that has to be done, and a lot of people are gonna need to step up. I know Gary went in our board meetings. I probably get a little irritated. It's because of that. That's what I have to deal with. And it's not because it's on paper, it's because I've been there. I'm on the state task force, and I've been at some pretty nasty things. One thing has changed as far as EMA is concerned. The state has changed that in worst-case scenario, when things have to happen quickly, they now give me the authority to call the National Guard directly. In fact, the National Guard has been in contact with me. To deploy major assets, we have to be ready for that. And having been a member of the team that went to Hurricane Sandy, I can tell you, it was an absolute nightmare. It's nothing hadn't done before. We all have to go through the check, get our vehicles ready. That's before we took off, had to go through a vehicle inspection. Everything ready to go. Takeoff on, the full complement of the task force. We have all medical, fire, and law enforcement, or 140 vehicles. And it's, it's heartwarming to go through a community that people don't know where you're going, but they know it's important and they're glad to see you. We all check in with the state once we get there, the big blue bus where you're logged in. My, part of my team getting ready for psychological first aid to help victims. A lot of paperwork involved getting that done. We work 12- to 14-hour days, and those are things that we understand. The 181st weighing out of Terre Haute, their medical group, portable hospital. Now, this is critical for local. When these people have to come in, we have to be in the same language. And a lot of times, you'll be doing many things and wearing many hats. I started out previously doing psychological first aid. I ended up being the hospital administrator in field hospitals because we're running out of personnel, I've got all those people coming in. So, what does it take to get to this point? A lot of logistics plans and resources, and I spent the last six weeks with the state doing this thing. We've got to get these down, we've got to get people trained, and we've got a lot of things that we've got to get understanding. Those are the key issues. I've been working with a lot of places and getting ready to start mutual aid agreements for other businesses. And the staging areas and points of distribution, landing zones for helicopters that if they have to come in. Back when we had the Blue 200, 708, that was at the point where helicopters are getting ready to start dropping feed for animals. So, there are a lot of things there that are critical. Rocket units bring what they need. We took everything and lived off of MRMs and bottles of water for weeks at a time. So, that's what's going on. But here's the key. This is where logistics comes in. All those white trucks are supplies. And when they get to the point that they're going, there has to be a game plan in place. You have to know communications, talk to them when they're on their way. You've got to be able to communicate with the different subgroups that are there. You've gotta have a place to put them. That is what I'm doing right now, getting those logistics together in those areas. As you can see, four miles, trucks are backed up with medical supplies and everything else. It's critical to get there. Task, the city and the county needs to develop a budget. I'm glad the mayor's here. And those agreements, the plans are being updated. A lot of training going on, there's gonna be more of that. And then, as time goes on, we'll get there. Now, the other thing that I had, the six committees met, we have one more facility to look at. And then, Mark, we'll sit down with you, come review our activities and where we're at. We've got further training coming out for the employees. The Indiana Geological Society has scheduled us for the first quarter of next year to bring their shakehouse up. It's an earthquake simulator. It shows people exactly what that looks like, what to prepare for. That's part of our ongoing training. Communication report, doing a lot of research. I want to submit a report to you on that, some ideas I have, things that I think we need to look at and be serious about. Something I'm extremely proud of, that just got final okay. Been working on this for a long time. It's now official. Yes, sir. You're killing me right here. The radio station I've been working on for emergency management in the county is now official. I submitted my final engineering to the Federal Communications Commission. WKK is now an official radio station. So, we've gotta get the building done, get in there, get online. That will help a lot in so many ways. It will help with community emergencies. It will supplement our warning systems. In fact, I've got a company that's going to be giving a demo tomorrow. They say they can reduce the cost we're currently paying now for other brands. So, we've got to look at options there. Other than that, the Board of Animal Health contacted me about the non-cattle that died last year in Northern Park County. Their final conclusion is it's natural causes. They're saying blue algae. And the circumstances, they ain't going to that, but this is their report. And other than that, put some money in the bank. $18,000 came in for the county, so slide that to the bottom line. So, any questions? Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Do you have anything for us, Colin?
Um, just that I have the cemetery ordinance. Department needs to be, have me make a small change, and I'll have it for an extra week.
All right, thank you. Terry Bennett?
Good morning. First of all, we finally see our chairs finally, and they are nice. We had Commissioner Leota King, Councilman Dell Strong come over and demo them, and they're very nice. I think they're gonna be a big choice, a wise choice if we did. But I am here today to go kind of go hand-in-hand with what EMA Director Adrian Ellis was talking about. We're having some communication problems within the county. And with you guys being the board that takes over 911, I am requesting and asking if we could maybe make a motion or ordinance, whatever it needs to be, that we have agencies that are on VHF onto the analog and that all licenses before we are dispatching for them are all up to par.
This was, to add to that, Terry. This was discussed, it's been discussed since I took over as chairman of the 911 advisory board at the beginning of the year. And I guess this has been an ongoing problem prior to that. But our 911 dispatch center, if our frequency, VHF frequencies aren't running on, transmitting on analog, then we have problems with departments that have to relay traffic, number one, through dispatch to another agency and vice versa. And it, it entails more time consumption of our dispatchers. And in critical runs, such as multi-vehicle accidents with fatalities even. And in critical runs, such as multi-vehicle accidents with fatalities, even major fires, it's very difficult for our dispatchers to get everything done that they have to get done under protocols because of this digital frequency problem. And so, under their recommendation, I'm, I'll make this motion that effective July 1, 2017, all agencies that are dispatched by Fayette County 911 shall be dispatched on VHF, analog, and/or 800 frequencies only. And all agencies must be in compliance with their FCC licensing. And I think by us doing this, then we'll alleviate a lot of problems with our dispatch center, with our dispatchers. We had some that we had to carry out personnel discipline for. Because our protocol states that they have to do this, this, and this, they failed to do it because they just didn't have the time. And it's not fair to our dispatchers that they're being disciplined because our communications are not where they should be. So I would make that motion, and hope that we can carry that.
We want all departments to be on the same.
Same page.
Same page.
So to speak.
Same wavelength.
Same wavelength.
I'll second that motion.
Then we'll consecond it, that all departments go to the 800 megahertz or the analog services and agree with their FCC license. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
And also, for reference to the carpet claim, that's going to, that is, might be taken care of before the council meeting tonight.
Okay, great.
Terry?
Yes.
Would you be willing to send out all letters to all the agencies?
Sure, we have our advisory board meeting Thursday, too.
And we'll announce it there as well. Thanks, Terry.
Thank you. Dave, did you have anything to bring before? I see that you do, but you're not on the agenda as such.
Got my monthly report, that was it.
Okay, can you turn that into all?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Looked like it was doing very good.
Or trying.
And we do have mail. Jane, would you like to read our letter from the animal health people?
It's not. It's a very long letter. Basically, they just want us to sign a new contract for 2017, though, for the TB testing. There is a map, like what if anybody's interested.
The good news is, the state's going to help us from now on. Did they say they reimbursed some of last year's, or?
Yes, fifty percent.
I think that's wonderful, because they've come up with this lovely bill that we hadn't planned for at all, and it was a pretty good chunk of change.
The older one might add that the letter states that the county testing will cost approximately $5,000 for the year 2017. And it states that we, Fayette County will be responsible to appropriate one-half of that, that's 2,500. So I think we have that more.
You have that in our budget?
Yeah, we have that in our budget this year to cover that, so.
All right. We need a motion to accept the new contract.
I'll make the motion, okay? Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Do you have the signature sheet?
It's there.
Under old business, we have a bunch of, we've already taken care of that.
I'm here to get a resolution approved for, actually, I have two things. Get a resolution approved for the public transit system. The grant is due June 19, and this is just one of the steps that we have to do, go through the process of doing.
You need an approval?
Yes, approval of the resolution.
Some.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is this penicillin, is this what I'm signing?
Yes, yes. Also, I have the Fayette County Sheriff's Department wants to apply to the United Way for a drug dog, a dual-purpose narcotics drug dog. And they will be using monies from their commissary budget as match money for the project. And I just would like to get approval from the commissioners to move forward with that. It actually will take a signature of Leota's on the application. There won't be any money coming out of the county budget for that purpose.
Thank you very much.
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
Good morning. My name is JP Hall, and I'm the Director of the Eastern Regional Office for Indiana Landmarks. And Indiana Landmarks is a statewide historic preservation organization, and our mission is really to save, protect, and preserve historic structures. I've been in discussion with the DNR, the state, in regards to the Schrader Weaver Nature Preserve for probably a year or two, and more specifically about the old homestead that exists there. If you're not familiar, the nature preserve is about 108 acres of old-growth woods in northern Fayette County. And it was donated to the state in the 70s, early 1970s. And as a part of that donation, an original intact 1831 homestead went to the state also. Since that donation, the house, the homestead, has really been underutilized. They haven't programmed it, really. They essentially mothballed it since the early 70s, and it's just been sitting there. So I've been in discussions with them about trying to find a positive solution for those resources. More specifically, the original home, there's also an 1840s, circa 1840s barn, and then a couple of outbuildings. And then also on the property is a kind of a double-wide trailer that they've housed a caretaker for many years, but haven't for the last two. So I think it's imperative that something happens there, otherwise the property will probably fall into further neglect, and who knows what will happen. It's one of the more interesting houses, homesteads I've been, I've seen in a very long time, mainly due to its age and due to its integrity. So I've been talking with the DNR. One of the options that we've kind of thrown around is Indiana Landmarks maybe taking possession, temporary possession of the property, doing necessary stabilization work, and then finding a preservation-friendly buyer who could further invest some resources into the property and get it into a state that is usable and that is beneficial, you know, for the long term. The state cannot donate property directly to private nonprofit organizations or private individuals. So I'm essentially just doing some due diligence. It has to be passed through a government agency and then on to a private individual, hence why I'm kind of here. This is mainly informational to kind of maybe make you aware that I'm investigating this, and that, you know, if the county commissioners see this as a valuable project, perhaps you might play a role in this as a pass-through. And how I've seen this done before, it would be a simultaneous sale, so essentially it'd be a three-way agreement between the state, the county, and then Indiana Landmarks, and this would all be done within minutes of each other. A positive byproduct of landmarks owning or being the eventual owner or temporary owner would be, we would put a preservation covenant on the property so that it would be protected long-term, somebody couldn't come in there and tear it down, somebody would have to do what they say they're going to do and invest the appropriate money and do it in certain ways, considering its cultural importance. So that would be the eventual proposal. Again, this is informational, and we're kind of at the beginning stages here. In my conversations with the state, they see this as a good way to proceed, perhaps. And so, there would have to be some things done on my end, I'd have to get board approval from my organization. Obviously, there would have to be some things done at the state level in order to make this a reality. So happy to answer any questions. I just wanted you all to know that I'm working on this, and I'll be happy to continue informing you how this thing proceeds, and maybe perhaps even request your involvement in some way.
Well, I personally think it would be good to be able to preserve that and to keep that landmark within the county. And as I understand it, we would only be owning it for a few minutes and then just transfer it directly out to landmarks, and you're going to do all the paperwork and all the chasing down and all that wonderful stuff.
Absolutely. I don't expect any financial assistance from the county. This would be on Indiana Landmarks and figuring out a positive solution. So there wouldn't be any taxpayer money going into this, or any expectations financially from the commission.
If, once you pass it, it'll be passed to a private owner?
Possibly. The best use, you know, again, it's kind of up in the air. Well, what is the best use for that property? In the preservation world, we often think the best use is what it was intended for to begin with. I would love for it to be programmed in some way, but I'm someone who programs a historic site, a Huddleston house up in Cambridge City, and understand the realities that come with that. It's probably going to be difficult to have a public use there, just because of its location and it's pretty rural. And if the state wasn't able to make it and go over the last 30 years, it's probably difficult for anybody else to make it and go. But we're open. If there's a public benefit, if there's an entity in the county that would like to figure out a solution, we're all ears at this point.
Is there any other questions or discussion?
No.
Thank you for coming and presenting.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And thank you for allowing me to present this morning. I am the Practice Manager of Meridian Health Services here in Cothersville, and I am also a lifelong resident of Cothersville. As such, I feel, and Meridian feels, that it's important to communicate with governing agencies and community partners about resources that are available. We are here this morning to provide you with information about our services and to help answer any questions that you may have about the behavioral healthcare system. With me today is our Regional Manager, Sayward Salazar. Sayward has been instrumental in establishing a Meridian Health Services office within our community. Several years ago, she began her career as a female case manager at our local DCS office. And through that experience, she was able to identify many of the challenges that face our community today. Since being with Meridian, she has taken an active role in helping to identify and implement services in order to address our community's needs.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing us to speak today. We really want to just let you know that there is an option for your designated community health center in Fayette County. There hasn't always been an option here. So we wanted to give you some information, some basic information about Meridian Health Services and what services we do provide within your community. Our mission at Meridian is to help make our communities healthier through focus on whole person health. So Meridian Health Services is an integrated healthcare system, and what that means is that all of our patients, when available, have access to both behavioral healthcare and primary healthcare if needed. That way, they can receive all of their healthcare, both behavioral and physical health, within the same system, which is not only convenient but helpful to allow communication to both behavioral and physical health. We all know now that the brain is not separate from the rest of our body, they're connected, and if we're not treating both of those, oftentimes the physical part doesn't get better if the mental part's not better, and vice versa. So we're really focusing on moving that forward through all our counties. Currently, Meridian Health Services is serving 39 counties in the state of Indiana. Locally, there are offices here in Fayette County. We also have offices locally in Rushville, Henry County, Wayne County, and then going up north and also to Indianapolis. Some of the services that we provide here locally in Fayette County, we have individual therapy, mental health therapy, individual skills building. A lot of that is done in the community and in folks' homes, that way we can meet them where they're at. We have intensive outpatient groups, those are for folks struggling with addiction services. Case management services, school-based skill-building services. This allows us to help children who are struggling in the classroom because of behavioral issues. We can do one-on-one services with them, which allows the teacher to spend more time teaching and less time maybe addressing that one child that's acting out in the classroom. We also provide supervised visitation for Department of Child Services and receive several referrals for them for services, both for home-based case management, addiction, and supervised visits. We have foster homes in Fayette County through our Foster Hope program. We provide services with those with intellectual developmental disability and also some mental health struggles. We also provide insurance navigation, so many of the folks that come through our door that do not have insurance, we're able to help them get on to either HIPAA or other state plan insurances through that program. We recently opened an addiction recovery center in Wayne County at the old state hospital, well, not the old state hospital, but the state, an older building at the state hospital grounds, it's still there. And that's a program that will house 15 male, 15 female, two separate distinct units to provide addiction services, residential addiction services there. Just some information about Fayette County alone as far as who we're serving here, about 55% of the folks that we're serving in Fayette County receive Medicaid or HIPAA state plan. 10% of the folks that we're seeing right now have commercial insurance, so that's your Anthem, Edna, Cigna, that kind of thing. 10% are DCS-only, so those are folks that DCS is paying all of their bill. Most folks, though, we try to get them on some sort of insurance, and that will cover their bill, so DCS doesn't have to pick up the cost for that. 20% of our folks receiving services are on Medicare, and 1% are Recovery Works as their primary payer. We actually only have 4% of self-pay right now in Fayette County, which I think really shows how this insurance navigation program is really helping. We're able to get people on expenses that will cover the services that we provide, which helps take the burden off of folks in the community. From July 1, 2016, to current, we have billed over $2 million worth of services in Fayette County. So we're doing quite a bit here for you guys, and we're excited to be able to do that. We, right now, are serving predominantly adults. About 74% of the folks that we're serving now are adults, and 26% are children. And we're hoping to move that number a little bit within working with the community school system and helping them find out, you know, what we can do to provide some services to the children in your community. Really due to our low self-pay rates, we're hoping that if there was a designation of funds as the designated community health center, that we would be able to provide some services that are unique and may not be something that's been billable in the past because we're able to cover that service. So something like a day reporting program that I knew used to happen over in the, I think it was in the building across the street, and that was a great program for kids that weren't maybe doing so well in school and really needed still to have that supervision. really needed still to have that supervision. And I don't believe that's happening anymore. But that's something that we may be able to look at, a possibility of doing some unique programs like that that aren't currently happening. If you need any more information or have any questions, I'd be more than happy to meet with you and let you know anything else you're wondering about.
You mentioned you were billing $2 million a year for services here in Fayette County.
Yes.
Do you have the slightest idea of how big of a piece of pie that is?
As far as?
Total mental services for this county?
Yeah, in Fayette County, right now, we are only providing mental health services. However, what we've found is a lot of the folks that we serve receive their primary healthcare through Meridian, either in Rushville or Wayne County. So, we have primary care clinics in both of those locations. So, right now in Fayette County, that is only mental health services. If you want data about how many people are receiving primary healthcare, either in Rushville or Wayne County, we could get that information for you.
Do you have any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Speedway Master Cards is the next thing I have on the agenda. I don't know about the other two commissioners, but this came as a big shock to me. We have had gasoline cards that have been issued to county employees. And Speedway has stopped doing just a gas card. They have decided to send Master Cards to these people that they can charge anything they want to on them. So, I think we will be discontinuing this service. I'm not sure what we're going to do instead, but...
I guess my major question, and maybe Michelle can help me, since she's about the only one here, but I guess I'm concerned, why cards don't follow vehicles? They follow people instead of?
They don't. In my department, they follow the vehicle. The card is in...
So, you only have one card per vehicle? You only have two?
Exactly. I have one card for each vehicle. And then there was one that came in that said Spare. And it's under lock and key in my office in case maybe somebody's going to schooling or something like that.
I mean, for instance, you're still listed as a sheriff employee.
The card that's in my vehicle for community corrections has Bill Newkirk's name on it.
Yeah.
I've tried for at least three years to get those names off. There's only two that are current employees, to no avail. So, the card in mine...
There's still one in the Sheriff's Department in your name.
Because they probably have the same problem I have. I'm getting all these cards. I got a bunch and I returned those. And I was guessing they were cut up when the new cards came in. Because prior, it's like everyone in that department had a gas card. Everyone doesn't need one. There needs to be one for each vehi...
Vehicle, yeah.
Yeah.
And I've noticed probation. There seems to be one for every probation officer in the office instead of the two cars that they have.
We have one for each vehicle and I do have one spare that's locked up in my office. I returned all the other cards to the auditor's office.
Well, I think we need to look at this for our bidding process, our budget process. I still think we need to look at having a tank and a pump of our own, whether that's at the highway garage or in conjunction with the city, working with the city. Because I know tanker prices are a whole lot cheaper than buying things at the pump. Yeah, and I think we do need to do that until we address something different. But I think, I agree with Mark. I think there should be a receipt come in for every time they fill up with fuel and mileage should be recorded on that receipt.
It is on ours.
So that we can verify that, verify those bills that are coming in. Do you need a motion?
I would say so.
I'll move a motion to receipters record mileage in the date of purchase. I second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
They have to have a receipt of each purchase with the cards.
And the mileage needs to be entered on that?
On our cards, I'm just entering. You got to enter the mileage on ours.
Do you?
Yes. And we do get the receipt every time. I got envelopes up there that I put them in and I'll probably carry. So, each month, I'll start a new envelope. I'll turn that in at the end of the month on our cash receipts.
Well, to make it easier for the auditor's office, if we could turn in the receipts that match the monthly statement?
Mm-hmm.
So that they don't have to go through and dig them out and separate them out. Because I know a lot of times, credit card doesn't run on the same timeframe as our claims does. So, if, whatever that, I'm assuming the monthly statements come to your off, your...
I get them from down here. But...
Well, if you can turn in the receipts that match that monthly statement, that would be helpful.
Can we get a bid from some other companies that only do gas cards? By landmark or...
If they will, I mean.
Because we used to advertise the landmark.
We'd have to advertise. We'll have to advertise and hopefully get the bids. In the past, it's just been Speedway, hasn't it?
No, we used to mean land...
No, no, I'm saying this past year, it was the only bid we got was Speedway, I think, if we even got that.
I don't know that it's been bid in several years. And that's probably what we need to do.
We also had the, in conjunction, had the Shell Fleet cards.
Yeah.
Which we used out of town.
Could use them out of town.
Right.
Can you send the letter?
To advertise for some kind of a bid. I'm against having a Master Card at all. But I don't think that's appropriate.
Can you send an email to the department heads concerning that motion we just made?
Okay. As far as the receipts?
Yes.
Right. And then what about the Master Cards themselves, the ones that we have? The ones that have already been distributed?
We're going to have to, they need to be, we...
We need to go to each department and find out why they're having them for every individual and not just for vehicles.
Yeah, I guess.
So, somebody going to be in charge of doing that?
I'll take over that.
We'd also like to thank you for bringing this to our attention too.
Yes.
On our card, on the Fayette County Animal Shelter?
Yes.
It says the old seven Dodge. And the other one will say the 2000 Dodge. So, that does keep them separated.
So, yours has the vehicle and not individual names on it?
Just no business name, just says Fayette County Animal Shelter and the year of the vehicle.
That's interesting. The others have names on them, of people that no longer are employed or haven't been employed for Fayette County for a long time. I was curious about that one that you said that you have, Michelle. So, we don't know who has the one that has your name on it?
It must be at the Sheriff's Department.
Okay.
Because I turned all that stuff in when I left the Sheriff's Department. Because that one shows up on the Sheriff's Department bill. The one that I have says Bill Newkirk shows up on community corrections. But I think there was like maybe eight or nine cards that came to community correction and only with names and only two of those worked there. One has the van on it and one says Fairness Tower, individual names. And I've asked to get them changed, but no luck.
Okay. Well, we need to find out what's going on because it's one thing to have a gas card and it's another thing to have a Master Card. I think Speedway was really nice to pull this stuff, but they probably lose all my business if they'd had any other one. Who do we have next? Board appointments.
Do you have those or...
Sorry. On there, the Cemetery Board if we had an appointment. And then three of the super board people are going to expire in September. Now, the library, when I found out my information was incorrect, and our library appointment actually does not expire until 2019.
Okay.
They're suspended.
We just need to be aware of it and start looking.
Yeah. Okay.
Cemetery and...
Cemetery Board, three of them.
Yeah.
Everton...
Everton, so...
Everton Super Board. And three of those expire in September. Are there any patron concerns?
Do you want to talk?
Warren.
I've tabulated bids and I'll just look at them right now in the legal part. And see my engineer's estimate was $671,900. So, they were under the engineer's estimate. Of course, we had only one bidder. So, I'd recommend that we award a contract subject to proof of insurance and the payment bonds and construction bonds.
I'd so move that as Warren stated.
I second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Motion for approval of claims in payroll?
I'll move to through the payroll claim. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to also make a motion that we go ahead and adjourn the meeting or ask you to adjourn the meeting.
Hold it.
Oh, we've got something else to talk about?
We had permits for frontier to approve.
Oh.
They were slid in next to Richard.
Permits for frontier. Frontier has asked for permits to tear up our right-of-way in lots of different corners. We have all seen the addresses and places. They also, in their permits, said that they would hold us harmless if Richard by mistake happens to tear up some of their right-of-way or their things. I'm sure that was on the original permits. And they had sent us a bill for $800 some dollars for one car. And I was really glad to see that line that said that they would hold us harmless because their flags were not in the right place and we did damage some of their lines. They use our right-of-way and...
I'll move to through that. Second.
Then we'll just second that we approve these permits. And they all have to be signed too. And I'd like to make a move to go ahead and sign these after we've adjourned the meeting. It's not as though we're doing anything against the open door because all of these have already been approved in public and the signatures. And we're going to sit here and watch us sign papers. Seems irrelevant for that to happen on TV. So, I'm going to ask that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Second. Been moved in second to all in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes. These are adjourned.